Welcome everybody to the Planning Township of West Orange Planning Board Meeting July 5th, 2023. Notice of this meeting was given to the Township Clerk and posted on Township Bulletin Board and Township Website Calendar, and sent to the West Orange Chronicle and Star Ledger. This meeting has been proudly noted to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. No new matters will start after 10:30 PM. May I ask, get ready to rise for the pleasure of allegiance, please?
Let your allegiance, CJ.
Let your allegiance to the flag.
United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Okay, the next regular planning board meeting will be held August 2nd, 2023 at 7:30 PM via Zoom. Roll call, please, Yamalat.
Mr. Albert. Mr. Cardozo. Mr. Waino.
President.
Mr. Jensen.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mayor McCartney. Mr. Morgan. Mrs. Maraldo.
Here.
Mr. Council President Williams.
Present.
Mr. Watts. And Dr. Back.
Here, thank you. Diana, would you swear in our professionals, please?
Sure. Please raise your right hand. And we have Mr. Hess and we have Ms. Laheny. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
You could each just identify yourself on the reference so that it's clear.
I'm Liz Laney from Phillips Price Board Planner, filling in for Paul Gragge.
And John Hess, CME Associates Board Engineer.
Thank you. Okay, the first application we have is a Courtesy Review Application. PB 25-03 County Bestix Turtle Bag Zoo Animal Wellness Center, 560 Northfield Avenue, Block 163, Lot 1, Zone R1. The applicant proposing to replace the existing wolf exhibit at the Turtle Bag Zoo with the new Animal Wellness Center. Mr. Flader for the applicant.
Thank you and good evening.
Excuse me, Mr. Flader, let the record show Mayor McCartney joined the board.
Let the record also show that I'm, I am recusing myself from this.
Thank you, and Mr. Gachion is going to be our attorney.
My pleasure, Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, I'm sorry, Mr. Flader, you have the floor.
Thank you and good evening, my name is Mark L. Flader, F-L-E-D-E-R, I'm one of the senior partners from the Connell Foley Law Firm from our Roseland, New Jersey office. Many of you, I'm sure, will recall that I have appeared before this board before a number of occasions to do Courtesy Review Applications on behalf of Essex County, and in particular with respect to facilities at the Turtle Bag Zoo. This evening, we come before you as a Courtesy Review Application with respect to a proposed new project we're very excited about. We present, we will present two witnesses and I believe four drawings, all of which have been, the drawings, of course, having been previously supplied to the board. As Dr. Back left mentioned, the concept of the project is to replace something that has been there, known as the Old Wolf Exhibit, with a new facility, which we call the Animal Wellness Center. I intend to present two witnesses, the first is Michael Piga, that's P-I-G-A. Michael Piga is a licensed New Jersey landscape architect and designer. He has done virtually all of the things for Essex County at the zoo for quite a long period of time. Mr. Piga has testified before this board on numerous occasions to support such applications, and I'm sure he'll confirm to you that he is licensed and in good standing in New Jersey. We'd ask that you swear a man.
Mr. Chairman, you want me to swear the witness in?
Yes, please, Mr. Gachion.
You swear you're about to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please proceed.
Say your name for the record, please.
My name is Michael Piga.
Is your license as an architect valid in New Jersey as of this day?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Flader, Mr. Piga is well-known to the board unless any of the members of the board have a question for Mr. Piga, we'll accept him as a licensed architect for the application.
We thank you, Mr. Piga, were you critically involved in parts of the design of the proposed project?
I was.
Could you tell the board briefly what exactly did you do as the thing is from the project architect who will be called upon very shortly?
Our firm and myself worked on the site civil aspect of this design for the wellness center.
Okay, and in particular, at the county's request, have you prepared and did we furnish to the board several drawings that you and your firm have created?
Correct, yes.
Okay, could you tell us, do you see the first one? Known as exterior rendering.
It would actually be the aerial image.
We'll switch over, aerial image. Drawing number one, right? And can you tell the board what this shows?
This particular aerial image shows the Turtle Back Zoo along Northfield Ave. Northfield Ave is located on the left side of the board. As you enter in, you'll see that the existing ice rink, then it goes to the zoo main entrance, and then going to the eat, north, plan north. You'll see that there, the exhibits at the top next to the black bear exhibit. This is the existing wolf and it's being renovated into the Wellness Center.
Fair enough, that's the square in green, correct?
Correct.
Very well. Um, okay, can we switch then to, to the next drawing? Can we go back to the rendering?
This would be the site plan, the conceptual site plan.
Right.
So, the conceptual site plan, which we worked on, shows the exterior of the animal wellness building. The corridor on the south side or the bottom of the plan is the existing walkway. We have three entryways into there, we have a gentle slope or ramp going in on the left side. We have a staircase in the center. And then we have an existing ramp system from where the pony trail was, which allows people to come from the pony trail, or they can go back up into the animal wellness area. The idea of this kind of project is to go for a wilderness feel. So, we're looking to use like stamp concrete as a basis of our design. We're making it look very earthy with fractured earth forms in there. We have some boardwalk stamps that are going into the area. You can see we have this heart in the center that, that's made of a rubberized surface that allows the kids to come through and give a feel of like a heart beating. We have some other seating areas throughout, as you can see down there is a bench system, and I'll be sitting on faux grass. We also have another little system to the left where, correct, that people could sit on. And then underneath a major canopy for the, that's off of the building is this bleacher system. This would be like a small, small outdoor classroom so the staff can go and teach kids or, or patrons about different things that happen in the, in the animal wellness center. The main entrance is on your right side, falls that line, that takes you into the building, and we'll let the architect talk about the interior. Along the backside of the building, we have a driveway, and the driveways brings down maintenance vehicles to the back of the facility. There is an outdoor off-exhibit area, I mean, off-exhibit place for the animals, so they have some quiet times if they're in that area. And otherwise, this is mainly to the staff members, they'll be coming back here, coming in and out and doing what they, their daily tasks. This is all connected to the existing driveway that's to the backside of this. The landscaping that we have out here is mainly native. We tried to do some unique plantings where we have a lot of yellow in it. We want to give people a different feel for the zoo and to enhance the architecture as we discussed with the architect at the time.
Very well. Um, do you want to make some comment about the aerial view?
Which one?
Okay, what about the, the rendering, how about that?
I'll let, I'll let the architect discuss the rendering.
Very well, okay. Fair enough, are there any other features that you had specifically to do with design and you and your firm that you'd like to comment upon?
I know, mainly, just like I said, we're looking for a wilderness feel for people to come up there, very cool, serene area using ferns and native plants of that nature in the area, just allowing the kids to have a good time as they walk through this, this area.
Very well, okay. Um, that completes our proposed testimony for Mr. Piga. Obviously, we're happy to address any questions the board might have, or of course, the public.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Piga, Mr. Flader. Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions?
No, Chairman.
Thank you, Council President Williams, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the only question I had was for the outdoor seating, just curious about the number of people it will accommodate.
It's about thirteen, it's not, it's nothing, it's like thirteen to fifteen people, it's a very small.
Not a problem, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Albert, do you have any questions?
Um, you know, only because I think it might be interesting to the public and I'm a little curious myself, where will the wolves be going?
Uh, I, I would believe they'll be, I will let the zoo director discuss that.
Do you, do you want me to answer now, or?
No, 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 not yet, thank you though. Mr. Guarino, do you have any questions?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman, I have one for the zoo director.
Okay, Mr. Klein, do you have any questions?
No, no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Smiraldo, do you have any questions?
Just one quick question, the accessibility to emergency equipment, things of that nature. I know in the past that we were able to get equipment up there. Is that going to impact any part of the, or impede any part of the emergency access?
No, that maintenance driveway, if we could go back to the site plan. So, in the back where it's off, yep, that's the maintenance driveway, it's going to remain. So, it'll give access through the zoo no matter what.
Okay, and I'll ask the architect, where are they going to have the standpipe and connection and all that stuff?
Thank you. Okay. Mr. J. I, I, can I answer that?
Sure.
Where you're seeing that tree right now, in the backside, we're putting same standpipe right there, in that area.
Okay, great, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Smirala, Mr. Jensen, do you have any questions? Mr. Jensen? Okay, we're going to pass on Mr. Jensen, maybe he'll get back to us later. Mr. Hess, do you have any questions?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Lan, Ms. Laney, do you have any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Piga on his testimony? Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Piga on his testimony, please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we do, we have Robert Raskis.
Okay, Mr. Raskis.
Robert, last name Raskis, R-A-S-H-K-E-S, address thirty-five Oak Crest Road. And my question is, will this building have a sound system for the education, for the people who are going to be sitting in the bleachers?
It's not intended to have such a system, if, if there was anything, it would be a low-volume thing. That's meant for the fifteen people that are there. I would think that the zoo mainly will not use that, because it's very easy for them to discuss.
Okay, and, and the seating, how high will the seats be off the ground?
The max they're going to be is about thirty-six inches. So, it's, it's just two tiers.
Oh, and, and what about the other seats that are surrounding the site?
They're, they average about two feet and the max they're going to be is about two foot high.
Thank you.
Thank you, do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Piga on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing any.
Seeing none, thank you very much, Mr. Piga, Mr. Flader, you have the floor.
Very well, thank you, all right, we'd like to call our project architect, who's Mrs. Laurie Skia Barisi from the Camino Harris, sorry, Camido and Associates Architectural Firm. Laurie has been before this board on many occasions. Sure she'll confirm that she is a currently licensed and good-standing professional registered architect in New Jersey. And we would ask that you swear.
She, she, she's about to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please proceed.
Are you a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey as of today?
Yes, my license is current.
Did you, did you prepare these plans?
Yes, I did.
Unless any members of the board have any questions about her, what year, we accept Mrs., Ms. Skia Barisi as a licensed architect for the application, you have the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Skia Barisi, could you tell us what your role is with respect to the design of the proposed project?
I'm the project architect, so I led our team in the designing of the project and coordination with all of our consultants as well.
Very well, is it also true that you, in particular, and your firm as well, have done any number of projects at Turtle Bag Zoo?
Yes, we've done several over the past, boy, at least twenty years, I would say.
Right, the drawing that's in front of the board now is, is called exterior rendering. Am I correct?
Correct, yes.
Does this depict some of the features that Mr. Piga described, including the entryway and, and so forth?
Correct, yes, the natural wilderness theme to fit into the North American area of the zoo. The exterior of the building, we were trying to use, we are using natural elements here, so we're using some faux wood grills along the facade as a screen wall. And this corner of the building here on the right is the public entrance, which is the entry lobby here, which is glass, and it's also has a solid side to it. And we have these abstracted trees as well, sort of floating in front of the facade.
Would you tell the board, to what extent the public can enter the actual building? In other words, are there areas the public cannot go into?
Correct, I'd like, I can show that probably or demonstrate that better with the floor plan.
Okay, why don't we go to the floor plan?
Okay. Okay.
There we are.
Okay, so, the public will enter, enter through the lobby here on the right, through this double set of doors. The lobby here will be open to the public, there are also some public restrooms here, right off this lobby area. And there's also a meeting room off the lobby, which the public will have access to, you know, with personnel, with zoo personnel, you know, greeting them and opening these doors.
Okay. With respect to the rest of the interior of the building, as a general rule, does the public get to go into the rest of the building? Or is that restricted to zoo personnel?
Yeah, that's restricted pretty much beyond these, this double set of doors here. This, it's all private area for zoo personnel.
With respect to the design of the building, to your, to yours, since you're the designer, did all of the aspects of the building, including its mechanical, electrical systems, ventilating system, so on, meet all current code requirements?
Yes, we do.
Now, is there any other feature of the design or the, the building detail that you think the board should know about in terms of what's planned to be done in the building?
Um, I could probably just give a brief overview of the different sort of zones, I'll call them, so this area here pretty much is the, I'm going to call it the administrative zone of the building. I'm just going to highlight this. Offices for the vet techs, the zoo director. There's a staff area, as you come down the hall, enters through the second set of doors, there's this wing, which we're calling the wellness wing. I'm just going to go by zones here. This is sort of our treatment zone in the front of the building. And then the zone at the end, these blocks are going to overlap, but this, this zone here is the quarantine wing.
In designing the building, did you work closely with the zoo director and the staff in order to make the facility have the kinds of things which they feel they need?
Absolutely, they, we worked hand-in-hand on programming of the space, circulation, every aspect of the design.
With the exception of the entry lobby, which has the red arrow where the public can walk in, is the rest of the building limited to about what you would call one-story high?
Yes, the, the entire building is a one-story building.
There any other features of the, of the design of the building that you want to call the board's attention to?
Maybe just circulation, the, so the public will enter through the front and in the, the back area, which our landscape architect had described. This, this is the private side, so employees, zoo personnel, they will enter the building from the back. So, these are the only points of access in and out of this, in and out of the building. Otherwise, I think the plan is fairly straightforward.
Very well. Um, I think that completes our architect's direct testimony, Dr. Backoff, we'd be happy to have her address any questions from the board, or of course, the public.
Thank you, will the roof be a white roof or a light roof to decrease the heat island effect?
Yes, it will.
And are, are bathrooms, are other bathrooms in here?
Yes, we have bathrooms for the public, which are off the lobby, and then there are staff bathrooms in the private zones.
And just for the record, they're all ADA compliant?
Yes, they are. As well as the entire site.
Thank you, Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions? Mayor McCartney?
Sorry, sorry, I was muted, I said no, no, but thank you.
Thank you, Council President Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, no questions at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Al, Mr. Albert.
Thank you.
Mr. Guarino?
No, not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Klein?
No questions.
Mrs. Smiraldo?
No questions.
I'm sorry?
No questions.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Jensen? Mr. Jensen? Okay, Ms. Laney?
No questions, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hess?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do any members of the public have any questions? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any questions, please raise your hand and be identified.
Sorry, not seeing any.
Not seeing anybody, I'm going to come back for one second. Let the record show that Mr. Cardozo joined the board at seven forty, and Mr. Cardozo, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, no questions.
Thank you, okay, close that portion of the testimony. Mr. Flader, you have the floor.
Yes, we actually did not intend to call the zoo director, but if I recall, two members of the board had indicated they had questions that at least apparently related to operations. And I think in one or both cases suggested perhaps the zoo director might address those. So, that said, we'd like to have Jillian Fazio, who is the director of Turtle Bag Zoo, come forward, ask that you swear her in, and obviously, she'd be happy to, to address whatever questions members of the board or the public might have.
Thank you, Mr. Gachion, swear her in, I'm sorry.
Fazio, swear you're about to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Very well.
Ms. Fazio is well-known to the board, we appreciate her time. And Ms. Fazio, do you want to say something to start out with, or should we just start with questions?
Um, no, I, I appreciate the consideration, and I think that Laurie and Mike did a good job of doing an overview of the project.
Thank you, Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions? I think you're muted.
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Council President Williams, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Albert, do you have any questions?
I just had a curiosity as to where the wolves would be going.
Yes.
I remember that.
Yeah, so our wolves will be relocated to another habitat in the zoo, within the zoo.
Sounds good, and it looks beautiful, the rendering's, the exterior especially, looks fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Klein, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Guarino, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Director, thank you very much for the great operation that you and your staff do at Turtle Bag Zoo, it's fantastic, you should be very proud of it. And a new facility looks beautiful, Lee, this question, my question is, what's going to happen with the current Wellness Center for the animals?
That's a great question, part of the reason and the impetus for this design and build is because we are outgrowing our space. And with the contingency planning that's required by USDA and the increasing standards of AZA, we're actually repurposing that building for more animal care space. So, we'll be using it for offices for our animal care staff, laboratories for students that come in. We'll be moving most likely our water quality lab there, so they have more appropriate space and housing. And then we'll maintain the animal holding areas there where we currently move animals to for potential hurricanes or when the air quality was just bad, we had to move animals inside. We'll have that space now that's clean and clear for those animals that are part of the zoo population.
Thank you very much, Adam Director, appreciate it, and good luck with a new facility.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Fazio, I've got one question, you mentioned two acronyms for the board's edification, could you and for the public, you state what those acronyms mean?
Was one USDA?
Yes.
The United States Department of Agriculture, which is one of our regulatory bodies? And what was the other one?
AZA.
Oh, AZA, the Association of Zoos and Acquaintance, which is our accrediting body.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Smiraldo, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Mr. Jensen, do you have any questions? Mr. Cardozo, do you have any questions?
None, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laney, do we have any questions?
No, I don't, thank you.
Mr. Hess, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Thank you, do any members of the public have any questions? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any questions, please raise your hand and be identified. Seeing none, close this portion of the meeting, thank you very much. Okay, do any members of the board have any questions about the testimony that's been provided? Okay, seeing none. And I'm sure that Diana will put this into the appropriate form and make a motion, we approve PB 25-03 County Bestix Turtle Bag Zoo Animal Wellness Center, 560 Northfield Avenue, Block 163, Lot 1, Zone R1, the application is proposing the wellness to replace the existing wolf exhibit at the Turtle Bag Zoo with a new Animal Wellness Center. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed, say nay. The eyes are above the nose, we have an agreement. Thank you very much, Mr. Flader and everybody else, have a wonderful evening.
We thank you too, we very much appreciate your time and the board's interest in the continuing activities at Turtle Bag Zoo. Be well, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, so, good night, so, before the next application, we have some administrative things to take care of that were on this morning's agenda that was publicized but didn't make it to this evening's agenda, so I'm going to share with you and work on this momentarily, so the first is, we have the, we have the draft minutes of five-three-two thousand twenty-three, the West Orange Planning Board Draft Minutes. Do anybody have, does anybody have any corrections, additions, or deletions? Seeing none, I make a motion, we approve the May 3rd, 2023 West Orange Planning Board Draft Minutes, so I have a second.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Council President William seconds on the motion, Yamalat.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Waino?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mrs. Maraldo?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen? Mr. Cardozo?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney? Yes. Chairman Bogoff?
Yes. PB 23-04 Redwood LLC, 200 Pleasant Valley Way, Resolution. PB twenty-three dash oh-four Redwood LLC, two hundred Pleasant Valley Way Resolution. Uh, with conditions, I make a motion, we approve. Do I have a second?
Go move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Guarino seconds on the motion, Yamalat.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mr. Guerino?
Yes.
Mrs. Smiraldo?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Chairman Bagoff?
Yes, motion carries. PB twenty-three.
Mr. Chairman, if I didn't interrupt you one second. I'm gonna excuse, excuse myself from the meeting. Mrs. McGovern's conflict is over. Pleasure to serve you for a few minutes on an interesting case. The zoo is always a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your service. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Mr. Gashion.
By the way, it was particularly pleasant for me because I'm moving into Bowlin Drive as of tomorrow.
Outstanding.
West Orange.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
I'll be there too.
Thank you.
Okay, let the record show that Ms. McGovern has rejoined the board. PB twenty-three dash oh-seven. Four seventy Prospect Avenue, Pure Natural Vibe Vibes LLC. I make a motion, we approve with conditions. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Council President William seconds on the motion, Yamalat.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mr. Guerino?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
No.
Mrs. Smiraldo?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf's not here. Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Chairman Bagoff?
Yes, one moment. Mr. Klein, just for the record, put on the record exactly. I understand why. I remember from last time, but just put on the record why. No, I'm sorry. Uh, you you're muted.
But, well, I'm just gonna, I wanted to post. He, anybody who votes no on an application that's approved doesn't get to vote on the resolution because they've taken themselves out of it. So he actually shouldn't have even been asked to vote on the resolution. Um. So he did the appropriate thing by just reiterating that he had voted no.
Gotcha, okay. Okay, thank you, Ms. McGovern. Okay, I vote yes, motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, sorry, we had that little administration of hit, administrative hiccup. And now. For the main floor show, PB twenty-three dash oh-six Crestmont Country Club Incorporated, seven fifty Eagle Rock Avenue. Block one seventy-four, lot one dot oh-one, zone R two. The applicant is requesting minus site plan approval for a proposal to construct three pickleball courts adjacent to its tennis courts. Covered a portion of the year seasonal air-supported bubble enclosure in the northeastern corner of the Crestmont Country Club's property. For the applicant.
Gary Forshner here on behalf of the applicant.
You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, prior to, I have to recuse myself?
Yes, uh, Mr. uh, Smiraldo is within two hundred feet, so he recuses himself. Thank you very much for your service this evening. Have a wonderful evening.
Have a good night. Good luck, everybody.
So I'm glad to hear that we're the star of the show this evening. We have um, an application, having said that, with all of our star qualities this evening. I'm hoping that this is gonna be short and sweet. We have an application that's fully conforming, one of the few that you probably see. And uh, as was indicated, we are proposing three pickleball courts. Uh, just one clarification as to the recitation. The uh, uh, the tennis courts that have a bubble, it's a seasonal bubble, and that's what they're referring to. The bu- the bubble has nothing to do with these pickleball courts that's existing as to tennis courts that are not part of this application. Uh, this application is for three additional pickleball courts, fully conforming. Um, uh, we'll get to, uh, you know, all the details. But to, just to kind of foreshadow a little bit, we have no objections to anything in the reports uh, from your engineer or from your planner. Um, and with that, any, and and we can go through that in more detail should you wish as we get to it. Uh, and other than any questions or comments from the board, I will introduce our, uh, we hope to be our principal witness. I do have. Um, not only Dan Fryer here, who is a professional engineer on this project. Um, but also uh, some members and staff of the uh, the country club. That are here to answer any questions that may arise, but I don't necessarily need them to what, to introduce or affirmatively testify with regard to the application. So, subject to any question comments from the board, I will introduce a Mr. Fryer.
Mr. Fryer, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please give your name for the record, spelling your last name, and give us your address and your business address is fine.
Sure, my name is uh, Daniel Fryer. My, and I work with Van Cleef Engineering Associates. My work address is four triple A Drive. And that is in Hamilton, New Jersey. Oh eight six nine one.
Dan, would you please describe your educational and professional background?
Sure, um, I'll be providing testimony tonight. I'm a professional engineer licensed in the state of New Jersey. Uh, my license is valid and in good standing. Um, I have a Bachelor of Science from New Jersey Institute of Technology and a Master of Science from New Jersey. Uh, Technology, Technology. Um, I've completed work in over twenty municipalities and school districts throughout New Jersey. Um, I have personally have over thirteen years experience in civil site design. Um, I'm also the appointed land use board engineer in uh, Robbinsville Township in Mercer County.
With that, does his credentials as a professional engineer be accepted?
Uh, unless any members of the board have any questions, we accept his credential as a professional engineer. Sir, did you, did you physically do the site plan yourself, the the engineering of this?
I I uh, I'm filling in for Jim Bash. Who assigned the plans, but our firm, yes, we completed the site plans.
And you reviewed these and you have a good understanding of what's to be done?
Yes, I do.
Okay, good. You have the floor, sir.
So Dan, with that, if you would please describe the nature of the application and uh, the proposal uh, having been submitted to the board.
Sure, I will share my screen as I. Uh, present this project. See. Okay, so the project site is uh, located within the Crestmont Country Club. The street address is seven fifty Eagle Rock Avenue, block one seventy-four, lot one point oh-one. It is an R two zone. Um, if you see on your screen, the aerial plan, um, the uh, country club amenities near this project are. A pool, there's a playground, uh, there's two existing pickleball courts. Um, there is the tennis court with the seasonal bubble. As we talked about, this is uh, this gets put up for a portion of the year. Um, and there's some accessory structures uh, for maintenance.
Um, just as a housekeeping matter, before you go on, this uh, plan, uh, this partial, par- partial aerial plan of the site. Um, was submitted as part of the package to the board?
Yes, this, this is part of the full set, ten page set.
And um, Ms. McGovern, would you like us to separately mark this, or uh, are you satisfied that it's part of the?
Just confirm the date so we know that the date on our plans in our package is the same. I can't see that date. It's way too small for my eyes.
July eight, twenty twenty-two?
Yep.
Page four of ten.
Okay.
And then for the record, if we can have the uh, materials submitted and supported this application be deemed to be part of the record, I would appreciate that.
Yes. Thank you, ma'am. Looking at, at the same plan four of ten, and it was signed by James Bash on June sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. I think that's the operative date.
Was there a revised plan submitted?
Yeah, it just says revised, the uh, the authorizing date is June sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. That's what we have. Is that your plan there that you have up in the?
Yes, that's the most, that's the most recent.
Okay, fine. Then, then that's the date of the plans, and then that was part of the package, and we can accept, we don't have to do anything further.
Thank you, ma'am. Dan, go ahead and continue with uh, your presentation.
Okay, so.
So let's, before we get into to this, if you would identify the date of the plan and confirm that it was part of the plan set.
Yep. So the date of this is. This pla- this page was not revised, or this was the first version for plan board submission, May fourth, twenty twenty-three. And this was signed by Jim on. January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
Again, that was part of the plan set that's been submitted to the board?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry. Okay, so ingress from the parking lot. Sorry.
Now you guys know why I don't run the technology.
Acting a little strange. Okay, so ingress from the parking lot is a one-way driveway from Laurel Avenue. And egress from the parking lot is a one-way um, out to Eagle Rock Avenue. The parking area. Uh, for the rec center will remain the same, and there's sufficient parking um, with the addition of the new courts.
There's no additional parking required by ordinance or otherwise?
No. I'll go over the proposed site conditions now. So this project proposes the construction of three pickleball courts with the full perimeter fence, which is consistent with the current usage. Uh, the site usage in this area. Um, as previously mentioned, there's no bearings is required. It's in full compliance. Um, and in full compliance with the township ordinances and the review provided.
Uh, Dan, if you would, just so the board is clear, can you identify where those three new courts are?
Sure. So the three new courts. Are shown here in green. And zoom in. Here's, here's the three courts with sidewalk to connect the three.
And can you show the access from the parking lot?
Parking lot area is up here. And. I believe that they come out this way, up the driveway, and they access it through this area.
Now, I thought they go to the far end, if you go all the way to your left. I'm sorry, the other left. Okay, my right, and you see where the, the, there's a building with a white roof.
Right here.
Uh, and to the, to the right of that building. I thought that that's where they're going to access from. I could be wrong. But uh, I think let's let Dana. Explain later, because she took me around there. I just want to be absolutely sure that we have the right access for the board.
But if you, if you want, we can have Dana confirm that. We'll, we can have her sworn in whenever you're ready and.
Yeah.
And perhaps confirm the access.
Yeah, after Mr. Fryer is done.
Sure.
Okay. I will move on um, to uh, review the setback requirements for this project. Uh, the new pickleball courts. Which will be in this area. Uh, will be situated adjacent to the existing tennis courts. Um, and are going to be placed further back from the side yard property line than the existing tennis courts and the pickleball courts. Um, there is a seventy-two point two side yard setback where the town requires a twenty-five foot. And the existing court is a fifty-two point one foot to the same side yard property line. Um, as noted in the township report, this project does not qualify as a major development. Um, it is not required to meet stormwater requirements. Um, the majority of the existing, existing area. Go back to the southern page. So the, the uh, majority of the existing area, uh, where the proposed pickleball courts will be installed, consists of an impervious gravel surface. The proposed courts and walkways have a total surface area of zero point one three acres. Uh, when accounting for the existing impervious surface, the propose, uh, the improvements will only increase the impervious coverage by zero point zero four five acres. Uh, we provided the board, uh. Uh, analysis, an analysis which shows the conditions are the largest designed storm event, which is the hundred year. And this will result in an increase in zero point one uh, cubic feet per second, which. Um, we consider this to be de minimis with no negative effect to the surrounding properties or stormwater infrastructure. I'll move to the project plan. Sticking with the stormwater.
So let's make sure we identify this plan for the board.
Yep.
And the record.
The page number.
Yep. Alright, so this is. Yes.
And the dates?
Yep, this was signed by Jim on March seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. And it was revised last on March seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. This is the, this is part of the most current set provided by, or provided to the township. Okay, so as you can see. There are, there is some minor stor- uh, stormwater drainage um, being done here. It's two inlets with associated piping. And that is going, those are being installed to help the uh, convey water from the low spots between the various ports.
And it fully compiles with all the stormwater requirements, Dan?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Um, this plan, uh, or this project also proposes the removal of four trees. A tree removal permit application was already submitted to the township. Um, as part of the review, um, the township planning board engineer. Were uh, asked that we uh, replace these trees. So two minor trees and two major trees will be planted as part of the construction project, uh, to replace those being removed. Um, this project proposes no lighting or utility connections. And uh, because of this, the pickleball courts will only be available uh, during daylight hours. Permits required were the soil conservation district permit, and this uh, project has already received certification from the Hudson Essex. Uh, Soil Conservation District.
Any additional signage?
Already received the approval. I'm sorry, I missed that.
Yes, they, we've already received certification.
And there's no additional signage as a result of this application?
No.
Thank you. Um, subject to any questions or comments from the board or the public, I have nothing further for Mr. Fryer at this time.
Great, uh, Mr. Fryer and the CME. Report, uh, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, uh, do you get a chance to review that?
We did, yes.
Okay, so. Not in any specific order. Uh, I think you've got, I think you touched on many of the points here, but uh. Number five. Okay, like number six, you propose an eight-foot high fence. Are you going to have an eight-foot high fence or uh, that requires a variance or a six-foot high fence?
So, Mr. Chairman, I think you referred to the June fourteenth report. There's a more recent report as of July third.
Okay.
That addresses a number of the comments from the previous report because there was a supplemental submission. So it might be better if we refer to the July third.
Oh, for it.
Uh, so to, to, to make it very simple for you.
I've.
We have agreed to comply with all the recommendations. The fencing had been dressed. Um, I think it was originally proposed an eight-foot fence. It was reduced to a six-foot fence to, to uh, address a previous comment. Um, were there any other items that you wanted us to address that we haven't already addressed?
Yes, it's going to be around the entire court, not just on two sides.
The fence, yes.
The fence, okay.
Four sides. I'm sorry, Dan, I'm, I'm giving your testimony. Am I correct?
Yes, the uh, fence height's been reduced to six foot and the, the courts will have uh, six-foot high fence on all sides.
And if I continue to give your testimony, will I get my PE license as well?
I think you have to do that for three applications.
Oh, three. Well, you know, I, I, you guys don't know me that well, but I've most definitely given engineering testimony on at least three applications over the years.
Okay, I'll sign off on you later.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Okay, do any members of the board have any questions? Mayor McCartney?
Chairman, my question was about the tree removal and replacement, but Mr. Fryer answered that. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Only question I had um, was why the applicant did not consider putting any lighting in at this time.
Mr. Fryer, I think you said why, but go right ahead.
Uh, yes, so there's no lighting proposed, um. Because we intend to use these pickle po- pickleball courts only during the uh, daylight hours.
Thank you.
Welcome. Mr. Alper?
Uh, no questions, thank you.
Mr. Guarino?
No questions.
Mr. Klein?
No questions.
Uh, Mr. Jensen? Okay, Mr. Cardoza?
No questions. Thank you.
Ms. Laney?
Yes, I just have one question, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Fryer, I know everybody knows pickleball, it gets a lot of bad press because of noise. And I recognize that these three courts are further away from residents than the existing courts and the tennis courts. But I was wondering if you could provide some testimony as to what impacts on noise these courts might have that would impact nearby residents?
Sure, we've looked into this. As you mentioned, these courts will be further away from the existing courts to the property line. As part of resolution compliance, we intend to conform to all noise ordinances and ensure that the, the properties that are near to the site will not be impacted. We have an exhibit which can show this in better detail. So as you can see, the existing courts are.
Which is this exhibit number? I'm sorry, one of?
I'm sorry, this, this is, this is a new sheet.
This is new?
So to be clear, this has not been submitted to the board previously, correct, Dan?
Correct.
Yeah, we don't have this. So, okay, so we'll mark this as for identification as A1, and we'll make sure that we get a copy of that.
Sure. Dan, you were, you were going to go through the distance of the existing pickleball courts and tennis courts to the property line and to the nearest residential property line?
Yes, so the existing pickleball courts are here in blue, and they have a distance of 66.5 feet to the property line. And then across this wooded area, which is the town owned by the township, I believe, is a total distance of 284.6 feet. The proposed, the closest point of the proposed pickleball court is 72.2 feet to the nearest property line and a total distance of 345.4 feet to this residential property line. So.
So, Dan, to be clear, the proposed pickleball courts are better than a football field away to the closest residential property line, not even the residential homes, just the residential property line?
Correct. We decided to use a proper line to be more conservative.
And then that's an additional roughly 60 feet more than the existing pickleball courts?
Yes.
And to your knowledge, have been no issues with regard to any noise or concerns with regard to the use of the existing pickleball courts?
We have not been made aware of any.
And, and for the record, Ms. Laney, you know, we'd be more than happy to indicate that the, the site will comply with the applicable noise regulations, both state and local.
Okay, that would be fine. I think that would, that would work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hess, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no questions. They've agreed to plant the replacement trees, which we requested, so I'm satisfied. Also, the separation that they're showing of over 300 feet from the property line, from an engineering standpoint, I'm confident there'll be absolutely no noise impacts.
Right, and there's, there's a number of trees in that property, in that area, that will be sound deadening also.
That's correct.
Okay, good. Okay, do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Fryer about his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Fryer about his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. Seeing none, we're going to move on. Thank you. You're up.
So, the only last thing that you asked us was with regard to the access, and I want to make sure we get some clarification so that the record is clear and your, your question is adequately addressed. Dana, I think you had shown the chairman walked the site, so we probably just as well if you, if we get you sworn in. And if you can go ahead and answer that question, if we can get Dana sworn in, that'd be appreciated.
And Ms. Cancelaro, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please give your full name, spell your last name, and you can give your work address, please.
Absolutely. Dana Cancelaro, C-A-N-C-E-L-L-A-R-O, and it's 75 Eagle Rock Avenue, West Orange, New Jersey.
And what is your relationship to the country club?
I'm the general manager slash COO of the club.
Thank you. So specifically, a question had asked with regard to what the access, and I think in particular the pedestrian access from the parking lot to the pickleball courts. And before I ask you to answer that, Dan, it might be helpful if you just put that aerial back up, so Dana can just simply refer to that. And again, for the record, this is sheet, what is it, four of 10?
I think the last, I think the last sheet would probably be, the last one they showed with the trees would probably be a better one. What do you think, Ms. Cancelaro?
Yes.
That one?
Yes, perfect. So, yes.
Point out where that access is. That would be appreciated.
Absolutely. So as Dan mentioned, the main entrance will be to the left where our tennis access is. But then if you go to the right of the third court, all the way on the right, there is a pathway there that will likely turn into, some members will come and go that way, but the main access is exactly as Dan noted. It will be for those court.
So there are two different forms of pedestrian access to these courts? Okay, that's all I have for Ms. Cancelaro. Subject to any questions or comments from the board?
Nope, I think that was my only question, and I want to inform the board, Ms. Cancelaro was very, very helpful walking me through the project. We looked at the architectural designs, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. I appreciate yours as well, and the rest of the board.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the board have any questions for Ms. Cancelaro? Seeing none, Mr. Hess?
I have no questions.
Ms. Laney?
No question. Well, the one question I have, I think Mr. Forshner already sort of answered it, but you have not had any complaints from your existing pickleball courts? In terms of noise, okay, thank you.
Hey, do any members of the public have any questions for Ms. Cancelaro about her testimony? Do any members of the public have any questions for Ms. Cancelaro about her testimony? Raise your hand, please be identified. Seeing none, thank you. Okay, I think we're done.
Yep, so I have no further witnesses, other than, you know, probably a 30-second wrap-up of the application or any further questions or comments from the board or the public. And it looks like Ms. McGovern, yes.
We just want to confirm, this, these pickleball courts will be used by the club members only, correct? This is not open to the public.
Correct.
Dana, you want to answer that quickly?
Yes, they will be for the private club membership.
Okay, so let's review the condition. The condition will be that the four trees are replanted on sites agreeable to the township director planning.
Two minor, two major.
Or they're designated.
No lighting.
No lighting. Hours will be during, during daylight hours?
And so be around the entire court, all sides, six-foot high. And will comply with state and local noise levels.
Okay. I make a motion. We approve PB 23 dash oh six Crestmont Country Club Incorporated, 750 Eagle Rock Avenue, block 174, lot 1.01, zone R2. The minor site plan approval for proposed construct, three pickleball courts adjacent to its tennis courts the northeastern corner of Crestmont Country Club's property with conditions. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Council President seconds. On the motion, Yamalat.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Guayeno?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen? Council President Williams?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Chairman Bagow?
Yes, thank you very much for your time. Good luck with your pickleball.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next regular, sorry, the next regular planning board meeting will be Wednesday, August 2, 2023 at 7:30 PM via Zoom. I make a motion. We adjourn. Seconds, Mr. Grino seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The eyes have it. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.